Okay, welcome to the stewardship subcommittee and first off, welcome to councillor Campbell.
Good morning.
Good morning, because councillor Campbell has joined this group that we just did a swap with councillor Mendez.
I've been thinking it's Mendez and Broadman who want to be together.
Or I was, as I was talking like it's a later meeting, so maybe.
Exactly. Well, I'm happy to be here.
Yes, well, happy to have you. And I think you've, you've been on this committee before, so you're familiar.
Sustainability?
On this stewardship, were you on the stewardship subcommittee before?
I don't even know what it's called. I've always been on community building.
So stewardship, there's background on the website. It's really an opportunity for us to connect on issues that involve other partners. Where the city might not be a lead role such as Envision Bend or the coordinated houses response office. Or as we are deploying American Rescue Plan Act dollars through a partnership model. So it's really those projects that have that partnership flavor. That's, that's really what's driving our agenda. And those three items that I just mentioned today are front and center. Just to let the record reflect, we have councillors Riley, Perkins and Campbell here. And then our first item, I'll just kind of help us move through the agenda since there's no formal kind of leadership to this group. Is the subcommittee minutes. And we're just accepting the minute. So Barb, I know that you weren't here, but it's totally fine to still don't accept the minute. So I'm just looking for a motion to accept the April.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So the items that I outlined, we're going to start with the vision action plan update. So this has been something the stewardship subcommittee has been involved in in terms of helping to scope out the project. Helping to approve funding or recommend funding that the full council did approve. And now we're at an exciting stage of really seeing the action that's coming out of that visioning effort. So you're going to hear a summary of that action and some requests from the Envision Bend team. For kind of ongoing efforts that are needed from the council. I think the big item that I'm looking for from a rec, as a recommendation from council is making sure that you're comfortable taking this to the full, full council. For a presentation and involvement. So just keep that in mind as you're hearing from the folks and I'll let them introduce themselves. Who wants to kick us off? Matt, do you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Just pretty close to you would be great. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm Matt Muchna, he, I'm executive director of Envision Bend.
I'm Kathy Schroder, I'm a board member.
And David White, board chair. Nice to meet you.
And so I'm going to give you the floor to, to provide the update to the subcommittee.
So we think we have slides.
Yes. I apologize. Yes.
Pulling that up, I'll start. I'm David White, again, nice to meet you. This is a really exciting week for Envision Bend, a lot of time and effort and thoughtfulness put into this from. Vision Bend as an organization and the community. Not the best public speaker, so bear with me. And it's been a while since I've been in this room with Eric, seen some fellow.
Yeah, I know.
Which is nice.
So David, what did you do here?
I worked in the utility billing department back in 2005.
Wow.
Yeah, long time ago. So I just want to say thank you for allowing us to meet with the stewardship committee this morning. And share our vision action plan for 2024 through 2028. Next slide. We've already done the introductions, but I'll do that again. I'm David White, board chair. This is Kathy Schroder, board director. We have James Rofe listed, which I think may, many of you may already know quite well.
Definitely.
He is not feeling well today, so he wasn't able to make it.
Yeah.
And then.
So he's not coughing over us.
Yeah.
That's okay. Then Matt Muchna, our executive director, which we're very grateful to have. And behind me in the audience is. Gillian Taylor with Next Consulting that helped us throughout this process as well. Slide, perfect. No, stay there. So we're excited to share this with you because as you'll see on the next few slides, City of Bend is listed on every single one of those. And that's because you are. The organizations that have been, and other organizations that have been incredibly important in helping us get to where we are today. And we need that continuation of support from the city of Bend. But we'll start by giving our leadership alliance partners just a shout out there. And I'm not going to go through each one. But you can see a list of those on there as well as the city of Bend.
Can you help, I remember, excuse me for interrupting, but in the past, there was a distinction between what all the different. Partners meant, one was about financial, one was sort of advisory. If you could just indicate that. Because when I was looking at the slides, I was confused about, oh, what's what?
Perfect. So the leadership alliance partners. Financial.
Financial. I, I would say in some ways they're both, they're the group that has been sustaining Envision Bend for years, since it was Ben 2030. And so they provide an annual contribution, but they also provide us with feedback and support and thoughtfulness, which is extremely appreciated. Did I say that wrong?
You said it great.
Okay.
Perfect. The next slide is our Ben Vision Project investors. Those are people that actually helped us out throughout the project financially. Again, you'll see the city of Ben there, upper left there. So next slide. And the last thank you is go to our Ben Vision Project Partners. These are organizations that have supported us, partnered with us and are continuing to grow with us. And what's great about this slide is it simply shows. It shows the broad reflection of how Envision Bend has integrated into our community. I think since our rebranding from Ben 2030, this has really been a great way to get back into the community. There are so many more in there that aren't listed on this, this one slide. But, but what's great about it is that these are organizations that have agreed to partner with us, work with us, share data with us. Donate food to us throughout this, this whole process. It's been awesome.
And share their perspectives as well, which have been really important to us.
Perfect, next slide. So I'm going to let Matt and Kathy go into more detail, but in short, you know, why the Ben Vision Project. Ultimately, we, the community have changed quite a bit since Ben 2030, back in 2005, 2006. I was here when Eric came on board and that project began and was part of that original group. That met and collated all that data. It was amazing and it felt really, really great. But when I looked back at my notes from then to now, it's amazing, the similarities, but also how many things have changed since then. We think now is the perfect time to align everyone on key issues and truly focus our community efforts together. I think it's really important. The community has really rallied throughout this project. And then, you know, please know how important it is for Envision Bend to target and include the voices of. Those in the community that are often overlooked in processes like this. We specifically reached out to. Segments of the community that typically may not get included in surveys and polls and just general questions or. Face-to-face meetings with people on their terms where they are. I think that was one of the best parts of this process for me. So I'll pass it to Matt next.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, the Ben Vision Project, which I'll walk through timeline next, but really started in the end of 2021. Though I think conversations started before that around the pandemic, but really the purpose helps shape our community's future from a grassroots perspective. We wanted to do our homework, we did our research, did an environmental scan to see what's already going on. We didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And so that environmental scam was really informative to how we frame this process. As David mentioned, and something that's important for me personally is just engaging voices that aren't typically at the table. We went through a host of interviews, focus groups, surveys, community polls and action teams. And I joined this process in January, so about partway through. And one of my hesitations was actually thinking, you know, who is this plan for and who is it by? And then I really got to learn and understand from the board, the work that had gone into reaching out to those groups that aren't always at the table. It's not a perfect process and we'll walk a little bit through the input, but I think overall they did a really, really good job of, of doing outreach, broad outreach. And then results. And I think this is where we're at this week. And it kind of, the weight of this is hitting me as I'm getting copies of the printed plan on my porch and things like that. Where I'm like, oh, we're here, we're at this milestone. We've identified core community values. We've created a community vision alongside the community and we've developed an action plan for the next five years. And, and something for us to aspire to, which is really exciting. Timeline, as I mentioned, I think conversations started 2019, 2020, pandemic happened, Envision Bend. Use that period to rebrand and rebuild their board and kind of gear up for this project. Fundraising and those sorts of activities happened really the beginning of last year in the spring. And then a lot of the engagement happened in the fall of 2022. And then the spring of this year, we worked to develop the plan and pull the pieces together from all of that input. And this fall and this week, we're launching the plan. So we're here. It feels great. This is a key piece for us, the community input period. And this is where our project timeline dragged a bit. Because we wanted to make sure we heard from voices that weren't at the table yet, or we hadn't heard from. So this foundation is what informs the community action plan. So did 73 community leader connector interviews. When I say we, I say the board as well as Gillian Taylor, who's in the audience and Stephen Ames with Next Consulting, who are our primary consultants. So the 73 interviews, we had 17, and by we, I mean Gillian hosted 17 listening to vision focus groups where we had 142 participants. And those focus groups are really targeted towards renters or LGBTQ or BIPOC or Latino or healthcare workers or groups. Teachers, yeah, veterans, groups that. Are harder to reach in these community projects. And also just wanted more of the in-depth qualitative information from those, from those groups. Had over 2,000 survey respondents, 933 people chimed in on our big ideas poll of what ideas we should include in the plan. And then we had over 225 folks at our February Vision Summit at COCC, which was really exciting. I think the most exciting part for our board was that it was familiar faces, but a lot of new faces too. So that felt like a really good step for us as an organization. So moving towards building the plan, we felt like it was really important to have. Crosscutting themes or lenses in which we viewed all strategies, especially environmental issues or economic issues that intersect across so many lines. We couldn't talk about childcare without talking about how that impacts various. Other, yeah, workforce or equity or those sorts of things. So using these themes such as growth's impacts on livability, making sure we're meeting basic needs. One of the key strategies that's coming out of this plan is cultivating a city of belonging. And I love that word, but you can't really talk about belonging unless you're really helping meet people's basic needs. So this was an important lens for us. Community resiliency and vulnerability to our changing climate. And last, community connectedness, which through this process really emerged as a key part of what makes Ben Bend. In this region bend, but also it's threatened and, and many groups of people do not feel welcome here. So our values, and by our, I mean the greater Ben region values that we heard. So these are the synthesis of what we heard from folks in our, in our surveys and interviews. And these aren't, these, these shouldn't be shocking to you. These are sort of kill, key pillars to our community. So we value our natural environment, parks, trails, open space, clean air, award-winning water that I hear a lot about and get to drink. Our sense of community and our welcoming small city qualities, economic opportunities, arts and culture, family-friendly atmosphere, lack of crime. And our growing racial, ethnic and cultural diversity, which I think is really important for us as a community as we look to add vibrancy. To our community and celebrate the cultures that are here. And our education and healthcare systems, which are really important for our, our region as well. So these values, these core values help us speak from a place of shared understanding, which I have found through this process. And really for me engaging in the city of Ben is quite large. The middle is quite large, but we oftentimes media and other forms focus on the fringe, you know, 5% where we don't agree. And I think moving from core values can help us find alignment. Our vision statement, and this is an exciting thing to share. I don't know how many revisions went back and forth on this. But we envision a greater bend that blends at small town. And when I say we, I mean board, the community, the folks that gave input. We envision a greater bend that blends at small town friendliness and exceptional quality of life with the amenities of a growing city. Helping all our residents lead safe, secure lives of purpose and possibility in a rapidly changing world. So something on the horizon, something for us to move towards.
Proudly aspirational.
Yeah, very aspirational. And I'll mention, you know, the 28 strategies that are in this 44-page document that we'd love to send home with you. And you have a free minute to flip through it. Is on a spectrum of aspiration. Some things are being done or close to being done, but just need a little push. And then other things like workforce housing or. Childcare, you know, that, the work to get to accomplish those items, maybe five, 10, 20, you know, it'll be an ongoing thing. So that spectrum is important. And to wrap our arms around all the community asks, we really focused on four key areas. And I want to list the strategies there to just show how robust the coverage is in this plan. So building an economy for everyone, guiding our growth and development, cultivating an inclusive community and ensuring a safe, healthy environment. So I'm going to walk through the next few slides just to list the titles of the strategies. And I was telling these folks this morning when we did run through, I was like, yeah, so my slides could take 30 minutes if I really dive in and try to explain, you know, the thinking behind these strategies or why we crafted it, the strategy, the way it's crafted. So I'm happy to, to dive in on any of these, but I'll just quickly walk through the titles. So it's important to note, there's seven strategies per focus area. So we have one game changer in the criteria we gave to the vision action teams, which helped craft these strategies. Was that a game changer is a project that is probably five plus years, something like workforce housing. And is really big, but would help move the needle in a significant way in our community. A quick win rather is something that maybe in the next year or two, we could see progress or, or check it off to help bring the community with us as we. Build momentum for this planning effort and this, the community's vision. And then the five additional strategies in the economy focus area, healthcare worker training and development, core area engagement and investment. Move-in financial assistance programs, expanded access to childcare and expanded access to healthy food. As some critical barriers to our, our economic development.
Could I go ahead and ask you there?
Please.
So the quick win, one stop, small business support.
Yeah.
Now, have you gotten so far as to imagine, you know, who might provide what, you know, where, where would that happen? How would that?
Yeah, definitely. That's a great question. So there's a couple of sentences of strategy language tied to each of these titles.
Okay.
And with that, there's lead and supporting partners. So.
Oh, okay.
We list organizations that are in a position, maybe they're either doing this.
Yeah.
Effort or.
Thank you. I was going to maybe suggest that we hand out the, the.
Yeah.
The details, so you can kind of look at some of these and a little bit more.
I asked that about this very first one, guessing that the answer is the same for all of them as we go through it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Would you like one? I'll get one later. Thank you.
When you're taking a look at that, just please thank Visit Bend, because they helped us with the printing. So that lovely.
Thank you, Visit Bend.
Not cheap.
No kidding. Yeah. Great, thank you.
Not a problem. So the next section, guiding our growth and development, one thing we heard. Resoundingly from the community was, we want to see strategically planned growth. And that was something we passed to this action team of about 15 folks that were focused on, you know, this, this topic of growth and development. They said, what does that mean? You know, strategically planned growth. I'm looking at Mickey, I'm sure you get that question a lot. We need more strategic planned growth. Well, really it's, it's all of this. And how can we use that lens in how we, how we grow strategically? So the game changer project here, and I'll give one anecdote. And I'll try to keep it at that for the sake of time for the rest of the strategies. But one thing we heard loudly from the community was, can we move the railroad out of the center of town? And I'm sure you all have heard that in many different forms, safety issue, also a traffic issue, re-market. Can we move it? And East Bend was the leading idea. Let's push it to the east side of the city. And pretty quickly, this group said, that would become a future bend problem. We, and also moving the railroad is, is no small feat and we don't want to create a problem for the future of our city. So what if we look at the core of this issue? And so this group workshopped it and really decided, you know, we, we may not need switching yards in the core part of our city. You know, up to eight tracks wide or more. How could that land be better utilized? Maybe it's a rail with trail or business corridor or some, you know, space for housing or other. Opening up that area in the core of our city. And so that's our game changer project for growth and development. How can we do a feasibility study, start taking steps towards looking at, do we need switching yards in the, in the heart of our city? And the quick win for this area, historic preservation, inventory and adaptive reuse. The five additional strategies improved, expanded, well-funded public transit. Which was key in many conversations, complete communities in our neighborhoods, a citywide bikeways and pathways network. A Drake to Juniper pedestrian corridor. And I'll mention this strategy came out of. The community conversation on closing streets downtown. People said, we want more walkability downtown. Well, I'll say some people, you know, voiced that concern. We said, how can we, how can we amplify that working with Hawthorne Bridge funding? And things that are, that are in the works to help create a pedestrian corridor that connects east-west. So that's where the, the vision act team felt like we'd have our, our best.
So good.
No, no, no. Where we'd have the best impact. Yeah.
All right. Two quick things. First, just in case we didn't explain it clearly or you didn't know. When we surveyed the 933 members of the community about big ideas, we came up with over 300 ideas. Then we seeded committees in each of the four focus areas that were about 15 people, nearly 60 people in total. Some people came from the city of Ben. So we had subject matter expertise in the room. Those people threshed through the 300 ideas, which were not exactly evenly distributed and really thought about and engaged. So the way we came up with the strategies that we've listed here is that those experts in the room with facilitation of Julian, Gillian. Julian, sorry, Gillian and Stephen sat down and really worked through those, those inputs to come up with these. You'll see when you look at the plan, there are also ideas for moving forward in the future. So we, there were some ideas that were great, but they didn't quite rise to the top of the work of the vision action teams. But they are also captured in the plan for the future. So we are really hoping that this document will serve as a foundational point moving forward. So that was one thing I wanted to make sure everybody understood.
Thanks.
And the second thing is that, you know, we acknowledge and we are, we celebrate that some of these things already have work going on on that. Our job wasn't to, you know, come up with 700 new ideas. Our job was to surface what the community said were the most important things. We can't get these things done without the work of partners as well, but I'll talk more about that in a minute. Sorry, Matt.
No, thank you. That's really helpful context. Thanks for explaining that. Yeah, the vision action teams are really, they had a large task of refining. All of these ideas into comprehensive strategies. So the last one here, I'll mention housing innovation and affordability coalition. And trying to move that conversation forward. And, and as a strategy to do that. Cultivating an inclusive community was the next group. A lot of robust discussion here. The game changer project that came out of it was the city of belonging. And really, again, looking at what are the factors of belonging to a place, not just welcoming. But how can we look at the, the mental health ramifications as well as the, the engagement in, in the community, the civic engagement aspects? So really building off the city's welcome week to create a year-long festival of belonging, showcasing different groups in our community. And cultivating conversation around belonging. Our quick win was social service information kiosk. We also talked through and outline. An alliance of equity partners, community education on homelessness and really specifically addressing the stigma around homelessness. And doing a large public education campaign there. Collaborative arts and continuing that, yeah. Collaborative arts for community cohesion, mental health and wellbeing in our schools and neighborhood by. and neighborhood vitality and resiliency. And the last group, certainly not the least, ensuring a safe, healthy environment. The game changer project that came from that was something I, that's listed in the Bend 2030 plan as well. So something that's been on the community's radar for a long time, but that's conserving, preserving the 33,000 acres that is Skyline Forest. It's a big ask. It's something that a community or this, this action team felt like would really move the needle for our community. The quick one being outdoors for everyone and making sure that barriers and language access and certain things are, are accommodated for, or that we're able to help more people access the, the parks and trails and, and nature spaces.
Skyline Forest.
No, no, the quick win, it's the next project.
And is that a specific place?
You're asking what Skyline Forest is.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large swamp forest land outside of the city's UGB to the west. Yeah. I would say sort of.
Long Skyliners Drive, I imagine, maybe.
Sort of north, north of Skyliners and stretches up towards Sisters is privately owned, used to be, it still is private forest land. It's kind of what you can see, you know, on the skyline below the mountains.
Interesting. Thanks.
Start the land trust and land watch and several other organizations have been actively engaged in trying to figure out how to purchase it essentially.
Thank you.
Check it.
No, thanks.
Yeah, totally. The five strategies that came from this group to support were adapting to climate change to focus on community resiliency with our climate action plan, interconnected regional trail systems, similar to the lava butte to the pine, multi-use pedestrian path that's underway with ODOT. How do we further connect our cities with pathways? Solarizing bend, thriving urban tree canopy and blue zones project for equitable community health at a, at a comprehensive level. So not just physical health, but also mental health and creating spaces and food access and things to help improve our community's health. And with that, so that's sort of context of this 44 page document to help sort of frame as much as we can, there's a lot of information in there to frame that. But now I think the exciting piece and where we're at this week is turning over to what's next? What's implementation look like? How do we ensure that this isn't a document on the shelf? So I'm going to pass it to Kathy for the remaining part of our slides.
Thanks. Thanks. So I think maybe the first question that comes to people is, well, what are you guys going to do? What's the role of envisioned bend moving forward? And we've spent some time in strategic planning, thinking about that. When you look at the strategies, the 44 strategies plus the additional strategies that are available, we are well aware that we are not going to get to 44 of 44. Rather, what we're trying to do is create a framework for the entire community to organize around for the future. It may be that one piece of it means a lot more to you than another piece, or one piece of it is what one organization is working on and another organization is working on another piece. We, where we hope to fit into this equation is we hope to steward the vision. We hope to be the folks that are championing and cheerleading it throughout the next five years and maybe more. We hope to be the ones who are doing things like pub nights and checking in with the community and writing articles for the bulletin and/or the source and reaching out publicly in other ways. We want to get stakeholders together because sometimes people who are focused on getting things done in one area don't have time or bandwidth to think about getting together with people who are working in adjacent areas. And the synergy of those efforts might help move the whole plan along more. And we, we feel like we need to monitor and track how things are going. So we're going to create a way to do that and regularly share it with communities, with the community and with our partners because we can't do this, just the 10 of us on the envisioned bend board. We couldn't have done what we already did and we can't do moving forward without all of us taking a stand and helping. You know, a vision plan is a statement of intentionality, right? We can all go through our days without intentions and our days will continue to unfold. But when we have intentions, when we set intentions and we, when we work together, we can achieve amazing things. We've proved that again and again and again in this town. So, and the other thing we want to do is help secure project funding where we can. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. Our lead and supporting partners identified in this document are crucial to what we're going to do, not just because we're asking everyone who are lead and supporting partners to amplify the plan, to send it out. We've got a media package for them all, to put it on their social media, to put it in their newsletters and to talk about what we're doing. But we also hope that our plan will be a way for them to achieve their work better. So if, if an organization is looking at their own strategic plan and there are elements of their strategic plan that align with the vision plan, we hope they'll say, oh, look, this is what the community told us. This is what we've heard. So this part does go into our plan. And from that perspective, we hope those organizations will reach out to us and, you know, we want to help write grants where they're aligned and what we're doing, write grant applications and those kinds of things. So we are looking at ourselves as being a really supporting partner to the work that unfolds with the work, with all the work of the lead and other supporting partners.
Can I ask a question there? This is a, this is, this is one of the, there was a couple of things that concerned me and this is one of them. Are, are these partners, are these like confirmed? Like, cause as far as I'm aware, the Human Rights and Equity Commission has not signed on to be the lead partner for creating a city of belong, you know, I mean, and, and so I'm wondering from like a resource perspective, a time perspective, you know, just a financial perspective, how, how are these things going to, going to go? I mean, like you said, some of this stuff is already being done with the city of Ben. Some of this stuff is being done with other organizations, but when it's not, what happens then?
Totally. And that's, we use the word recommended partners.
Yeah.
Cause we weren't able to check in with 128 groups this summer. We did check in with quite a few, especially lead partners.
Yeah.
To just make sure, how does this align with what you have going on? We don't want to, we don't want to task you with a large ask that you're unable to handle. So a lot of that jockeying of like, hey, you're listed as a lead partner here. They said, please move us to supporting. We'd love to support an effort, but we're not in a position to, to take this on right now. And so that was a really interesting conversation. I think that's probably where we'll do the most iteration work in the coming years is who's actually the lead partner here and, and who can really champion that. So that was one of the questions I had of like, are we having people sign MOUs or how formal is this partnership? But it's, it's pretty informal. And I think I'm now of the conviction that that's really important to not lock people into something that may not be feasible in a year or two and really help in an organic way cultivate in support of this effort.
But there won't be any formal ask of these lead partners.
Well, what we are hoping to do is come to a variety of partners and non-partners and come and talk about this. So from that perspective, there won't be a formal ask and you won't be asked to sign an MOU or anything like that. But we're hoping to share the intentions and to share the intentionality and frankly to inspire you guys, whoever you are, to choose to make this kind of work part of what you're doing. But every, every organization has resource constraints. Everybody's got challenges. Everybody's already got a lot on their plates. So what we hope to be able to do is just to continue to elevate this. We're not going to insist, we have no authority. We have only the work of thousands and contributions of thousands of city of Bend and greater bend individuals who've helped us shape what they see as a vision that at least calls to me about what we can become. And if we can inspire people to work along this way, then that's what we're happy for. But where there's no sticks here, we've only got.
And until, sure council, I've, I've met with the envisioned Ben team to look through these items in, in detail. And while some of the wording might not be exactly some of the wording, I've looked for that to, to make sure that we're in sync. There are a few items, and I think this is something that we should probably talk about with the full council that are on here that are not part of our council goals or that are not part of our budget. And, and so I, I want to set the expectation, I've shared this with the envisioned Ben group, that those would be items that we would consider for the next goal setting session, just like we do listening sessions with our community partners. We do a survey. This would be a key input into the next biennial goal process. If there is something that was in here that wasn't on the council goals, the council wanted to take up, we would need to have a conversation about what comes off. We don't have unlimited resources, so it's a matter of prioritization. So, but most of the items.
The railroad next week.
No, that's probably, that's, that's the.
I thought you were going to, you know, drive the first.
And, and that's the one, maybe to use that as an example.
That's taxes and railroads.
Exactly. No, that's exactly right.
Using that as an example, I think for, for us to really engage in that work, we need to have a staff person dedicated. It's a full-on project, like we don't have that right now. That could be something in the next biennium, you're factoring in and prioritizing. And to, to really move it forward, you need dedicated leadership to advance these things. They're not going to, sometimes, especially I, I'm a big proponent of the game changers aren't going to just happen organically. Those are the things that you're really going to want to be thoughtful about and dedicate some resources. So that's a bigger conversation than what we can have today, but just to give you an example of how we would integrate some of this work into how we would operate.
And that's actually in two slides, so.
Can I ask you this follow-up question? Just, so just to be clear then, they're recommended lead partners or, or these are all recommendations and you've talked to some, but not necessarily got confirmations, but not necessarily to everybody. This is what's coming out of the recommendation from.
That's right.
Include, so that would include the Human Rights and Equity Commission.
Right. That's correct. And I just want to emphasize the last two words on this slide. We don't think this is a static thing, you know? Not only is this aspirational, right? Because it's a big set of things. We also think it's going to change. So we refer to this as a living document. I mentioned earlier that we all have opportunities to move things forward. So in the next slide, we just, we have, as you'll see in the plan, we have the one small thing section. So we're hoping every community member who hears this plan and who is excited about an intentional vision will tell a neighbor or a coworker about the plan. It'll be available online as of Friday for everyone. Will volunteer because volunteering makes a huge difference, not only in the lives of the community members who you touch, but also in your own life. Volunteering is one of the cures to the social ills of this age. Not that I have opinions about these things or anything. Sorry. To follow and engage with us, we, you know, we do not work in a vacuum. We are very interested in feedback and thoughts and we are constantly reshaping what we're doing based on what we're hearing. But know that our approaches are rooted in all the data that we collected to get to this point. And then help us update this document. The living document continues to live. And then we get to what Eric just said. The next slide is that really of all of our partners, you guys are the lead, the key, you know, the be all and end all, the cat's pajamas, the bees knees, all of those things. So you're listed on 18 of the 28 strategies. We don't expect that that means that all of your work is immediately going to be transformed only to be envisioned bend. But we're hoping that eventually that more of this plan gets aligned with council goals and that you find it useful when you're working in your areas to cite the plan. Maybe there are times when you get disagreement from the community and you can say, you know, when envisioned Ben did the study that they did with the help of Next Consulting, here's what they found on this topic. So I'm, we're hoping that that will be useful to you as well, which leads, go ahead.
I was just going to add one thing on this, on this slide, which is, you know, I think we can really help bring recognition and community support along with a lot of these things. And I think a lot of our work is going to be engaging, you know, outreach and education and talking about complete communities and what does that mean and how does that look? And so we're excited for that.
The next phase, we're pivoting. Pivoting is always fun. So what happens next, just from a practical perspective? Well, we're right at the beginning. You guys are number one on the outreach and awareness campaign. On the 28th, and we hope you'll all be able to be there, we'll be unveiling the plan with the key partners and other stakeholders at the mountain room at Deschutes Brewery at four o'clock PM. And then on 29th, on the 29th, we are unveiling via media outreach and on the website and other ways, the, the plan to the public. And then we'll go into October 26th will be the presenter at the city club forum. And we're looking forward there because we're going to ask people to help us think about implementation on one of the areas in small group format. So it should be a really dynamic and fun city club meeting. Hope you can come. And then on an, on an ongoing basis, we're going to try to do an annual vision summit. You know, some of the things we talked about, about updating the community, getting everybody inspired and engaged year after year after year, because this can't just sit on the shelves. It's too important for the future of Greater Bend. So then.
Can I ask about that? One please, on the, the meeting on the 28th.
Yes, ma'am.
So will we be inviting like our Human Rights and Equity Commission and the Landmarks Commission, you know, the chairs of those, surprise, you're in this plan.
Yeah, exactly. That was my concern.
Right?
Actually, yeah. Minoj Alpieri from Human Rights Equity Commission is one of our panel presenters that evening.
Oh, great.
Yeah, been engaged. And so not every commissioner committee has been, well, they've all been invited.
Okay.
But not all of them can join.
Oh, of course. No, I just thought this is a good way to, instead of just surprise, here you are.
And that's sort of.
Surprise, come to a party with us. A little better, maybe.
At the shoots.
Exactly. Right? Yeah.
And that was the whole goal of having this partner unveiling was to answer questions and be like, you're in this plan, heads up. Also, what questions do you have about it? And yeah, be able to walk.
And how does, what does that look like? What does that feel like?
And, and I know our excellent Mickey can help with that. Make sure that all the right partners are getting from our, you know, in the city. Yeah.
That's great. Yeah, we have a good RSVP list, I think 110 or 20 people now. So there are a lot of people coming. So, so then I want to move to the next slide, if I may. Is that good? All right. So we did have some requests and Eric for, what is that? For told, foresaw, foreshadowed, foreshadowed. There we go. Sorry. 61 years old and it doesn't always come out right away. So we really would like you and the, the entire council, if you feel it's appropriate for us to make a presentation there, to get behind this plan. And it's, you're not going to get behind it today because it took me, I've been working on this plan for two years and I had to read the thing like four times before it even started to get into my head. It is overwhelming. But the beauty of the plan is that there are so many different ways for people to connect to it, so many ways for them to click in, so many things that they can look at and say, wow, if we can get this done, things are going to be better. So that's one thing. When Bend 2030 had worked back in 2005 and six for a few years, there was a badge that Bend 2030 provided to the city and any item on a city agenda that reflected the plan got a little badge on it. And it was sort of a way to reinforce the way we were working together and the publicity for the plan and those things. So we'd love it if you guys would consider that and we'd be happy to furnish the badge. And then.
That's something that the entire council would decide, I'm imagining.
Yeah, I think the intent would be just to integrate as Kathy's mentioning, just so that like on a issue summary, for example, to say this was a Bend 2030 item or envisioned that item.
I, I thought it was more like, I wanted that to be in like our goals or something. Yeah. And I was like, then that.
No.
Means that the other stuff isn't important to what we're doing. Okay. So that, that makes me feel better.
I mean, that was, was on a, part of the issue summaries is what I remember. So if that's essentially what we're talking about here. A way to connect the topic.
That's, yeah. Informational, not, we're not that organization. We're the organization trying to lift people up from not trying to, you know, you do this, we approve that. No, 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 that's not us. We're, let's work together to make the best bend we can make and the best bend area we can make. So we'd love to keep in partnership with you guys and we'd love for you guys to look back at your legacy, your long legacy in some cases on council and say, you know, part of what I achieved was this vision project happened while I was here. We helped fund it. We helped achieve it. this vision project happened while I was here. We helped fund it, we helped achieve it. This was part of what I'm leaving behind. We'd love to engage with city staff. We'd love to come and make a presentation when invited to any of the commissions or committees or anything you guys think is appropriate. And we'd love to, as Eric mentioned, present to city council as a whole, if you think that's an appropriate thing. And finally, we'd love for you to consider helping us sustain this effort. So we have one paid employee. He's absolutely wonderful. We're incredibly fortunate that he joined us when our previous executive director, who we should mention, Laura Fritz, who got us started on this project and was extremely helpful. And we, you know, we work really hard to, to work as a mean and lean operational board machine. You know, we're not, we're, I've never worked harder on a board in my life and I've done on many boards. So, so we would love for you guys to consider whether some sort of structural funding makes sense in terms of getting this done and in terms of Invision's Ben's role for doing that. But that's a discussion for another time. For now, what we wanna do is first see, does anybody have any questions that they didn't ask along the way? Next slide.
I do. So I think one of the things that I'd like to hear more about is just how sort of some of the methodology parts, like, you know, in terms of engagement in the community. It's, I'd like to hear a little bit more about who you did the focus groups with, but also the surveys and the extent to which they were or weren't statistically valid or just per self-reported.
Okay.
Cause I, I think it's important for us to be able to just understand that and, and know how, how we get our own input and some of the surveys that we do. And, and, and to be honest about the extent to which we are, we are able to ground truth, how well it truly reflects what the whole community thinks, right?
Yeah, I can start and then I'll have you all chime in.
Well, and Jillian maybe can chime in.
True. Yeah, it's a key point. I mean, if the foundation of this plan is off the community input, who gave that input?
Right.
And so it's not a scientific randomized survey sample. And I think there's other metric or methods that do that in our community.
But you didn't use tools like that at all in the process? So, so we're being clear.
Self-selected in an augmented way. So.
Yeah, and.
But you did demographic information.
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely. And tracked those demographics and worked with groups like Latino Community Association to translate number of surveys and, and wanted that percentage to be close to our actual demographics. You know, we have over almost eight percent Latino identified respondents in the survey. And so I think a big part of the outreach effort was going to community events and, and passing out the survey to get those copies, working with Meals on Wheels or Shepherdstown.
With Meals on Wheels deliveries and helping some of those drivers help complete the surveys. So homebound, older adults in our community, cause I came to this work from the Council on Aging, that's where I was before. And so, you know, one of the things about a vision for the future for a community is if we can make a community that works for older adults, it works for everybody. You know, you broader sidewalks, trees, benches, it's not just older adults who need those things. It makes the community better for everybody. So we worked hard. The Council on Aging was an important partner for us in this.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you for adding that. Yeah, and I think adding those focus groups, the listening vision sessions were a targeted way to try to reach those groups. Some were more successful than others, you know, some have larger turnouts than others. Going to community events and then really leaning on the partners that we identified earlier with the gratitude of just, can you share this with your networks and trying to get a broad array? We're using Greater Bend in this plan. I think regionality is a key piece to the success of this. And so we had close to seventeen percent of the surveys coming from outside of Bend city limits. And so certain factors like that, I think, help me and help the board have, have confidence that, okay, this isn't just Northwest Crossing riding a vision action plan, you know, and I think that was our, our big fear and a good, you know, impetus for us to redo this and bring voices to the table. So. So was it perfect? No.
Yeah, do you have a written summary of that methodology stuff that you can share with us at some point?
I'd be happy to send it to our community input report. It's on the website, but I can, I have one copy today, but I can email it.
So the other question I have was just, the, I'd actually, digital would be better.
Can I say one more thing before you ask your other question? The other thing I don't think we've mentioned yet is that we did hire an organization out of Portland State, is that correct? Called the Oregon Kitchen Table. And they looked at our materials because they are, their focus is on helping people reach underserved communities. And they looked at all of our materials and our translations and they, we tried to make sure that we didn't make a mistake out of our own unknowing bias or, you know, blind spots so that we could be as accessible as possible. And Jillian, is there anything you would add on that? Do you mind if I just?
We just, you might have to, just get you on the mic.
Thank you. No, I think the board has done a good job of describing our process. Oregon's Kitchen Table was the one I was gonna mention. From the very beginning, we knew that we had to put a lot of work in engaging with people outside of those that typically show up at a tower event, let's say. So every point in our process, we looked at how do we engage people? But not just from what we might traditionally think of, like people of color, but also the disabled community, people experiencing food insecurity, veterans that are often overlooked.
We posted flyers in apartment, we, we personally drove flyers around and posted them in apartment complexes. So we would get renters, because often renters' voices are underheard in situations.
Yes, absolutely. I would say, you know, of all the different stakeholders in our community, the, the renters were some of the most challenging to connect with, as well as frankly, the people of color. Many, many efforts and invites, but you have to earn the right to, you know, invite them into the conversation. So Oregon's Kitchen Table was really helpful for us in making sure we were looking at things from different angles and trying different strategies. The vision action teams that were referenced, so we had the interviews, which we looked at demographic information, where people lived in the community, age, people that have lived here for a long time, born and raised, people that were new to town. We tracked all of that. And we are really looking for people that, you know, could hit multiple factors of diversity.
What we were advised is the two thousand plus survey respondents, we had enough folks in some of the sub groups of demographics that, that was a statistically valid sub analysis. So we could call out some of that and look at it. We are not the statistics experts, so we will have to, if you have more deep questions about this, we have to get back to you. But we worked really hard throughout the process to try to do our best to engage as broad as possible of the community.
And I, I wanna give this committee some credit for that too. This is, I think, the third or the, I was the only one, I'm the only one left. From your, when your predecessor came, I think it's the third or fourth time that you've come before this committee. And from the very beginning, that was the focus of our conversation. And so I think we, you know, to, to, to give the committee credit, I think we helped move that along. And then formally asked them to go before the Human Rights and Equity Commission. And because of that, that was when Minoj, the chair of the commission, got, got involved in the, and I, so I think, you know, that, that did help the process. And, and I, I've, I've always been very impressed with, with how responsive you've been to, to that kind of feedback. So just wanted to put that out there too.
And, you know, I, as project director, I tried to balance the categories that we often think of as underrepresented with, you know, folks that have built this community to what it is, that have lived here a long time, that, you know, are maybe more rural or conservative, like how do we engage every voice that represent, that makes up our community? So the interviews, the listening sessions were really important to dive deeper. When we got to the vision action teams for the four focus areas that this group has mentioned, we looked at subject matter experts that, of course, but we also looked at, we invited people with lived experiences in that area so that we had a balance on as much as we could on the committee.
And we are just, we need to kind of wrap up in the next few minutes if we could, so.
Well, I, I just was curious, you know, I, you don't, don't see housing and housing affordability showing up and maybe the prominent way I might have expected it to. I'm just curious why, like, and I don't know if there, if there's an answer or not, I'm just curious.
Yeah, income, that's why I was wondering, sort of demographically, like the income level of people responding, because, yeah, you think that that would be much more than, I mean, not to, but like, yes, skyline force is important, but where am I gonna live is the number one issue we hear about. I mean.
It was, it was number one in the feedback we got, you know, housing and affordability. And I think that shook out and a lot of different strategies. I mean, one of the strategies directly is pulling together a coalition to look at, you know, housing affordability. Workforce housing is a game changer project. Yeah, and, and I think so that the conversation around housing and affordability was central to, to every group and, and this process. Yeah, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's just interesting, you know, I'm not sure that the community necessarily sees or understands that the biggest hole is people at the lowest parts of the income stream in terms of housing and what's being built. And, and so I'm just not sure if the community understands that yet.
That's a really good point. And it's something, I, we would like to take that and contextualize that. So we will talk about that, because that's what we are for, right? We're for amplifying things. We deliberately wanted this to be a broad-based strategy document. We, we wanted to let as much of the strategy ideas that came forth flourish as they possibly could. We wanted to organize it in a way that kind of laid them out as a smorgasbord. But there is no doubt that the number one thing that we heard again and again is, you know, housing. We've got, we've got to have enough housing. We've got to let people live here who work here. We can't even find workers, because I can't get anybody to move here, you know, that we've heard, we heard it again and again. And we heard it actually all across the community. So we will contextualize that more deeply. And I know we're out of time, I can address that with you offline.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
And I just might suggest just to wrap this up, I, I would assume that there'd be interest from the subcommittee to have this presented, maybe not in exact, exactly like this form, I think maybe a little deeper on the city action items would be my suggestion to really detail out those that we are called out as a lead partner. And I can, can maybe look at that and also denote which ones we have incorporated into council goals, which are not. So we can start thinking about how we would plan for those in the future.
Thanks. That's a great, I think it's a better route to take for sure.
Okay.
Focus on the city.
And I, I'm excited about all this work. I think, you know, it seems like a really good process overall. And as you probably know, I was on the Bend twenty thirty board years ago, but back when Eric started. And it's exciting to see that we have a new revolution of the, the vision and plan. I think it is a good thing for the community and so, yeah, thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thanks for listening to us today.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So our next item is an update on the coordinated Houseless Response Office. And as we've been sharing, Mayor Pro Tem Perkins has been sharing with the full council over the last couple of months. We've been moving in, in an effort to really move the office forward with the departure of Cheyenne Perington, look kind of really stepping back and evaluating what the, you know, the core function of the office, how we can improve the governance, you know, more than just rehiring another person, let's sort of take a step back. And so we've gone through an exhaustive, top to bottom process to everything from identifying bylaws and a, you know, better structure to go by, really looking at the lead, the organization that's helping to advance the work. And, and so that's resulting in a shift from Deschutes County to COIC. We have legislation that we are funded through to, that names Deschutes County specifically. So we are unable to change that legislation, but we are assigning some of that work to COIC. And Counselor Riley, who's on our, our city of Bend representative on the board, has been part of that. So we're all, I think, pretty synced up. I don't know if we need to have a lot of conversation here, other than just to let you know that we are moving forward with some updates to an intergovernmental agreement. Just some minor updates. And then I think what we are really focusing more on is an agreement between Deschutes County and COIC in terms of how that, what that will look like in those assignments. So they're working through those right now. But eventually, you'll, the full council will be seeing probably a minor kind of updates to the IGA. I wanna just say that, Mickey, fill in any gaps. And also to give Mayor Pro Tem Perkins, you know, any other missing pieces that you wanted to share with this group, since we have a little more time than typically just a council action report item.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if there's any questions or.
We had initially had this item when we were thinking of a more in-depth change to the IGA. But I think after some back and forth, we are slimming it down. So there, this need for this agenda item has kind of shifted over the last couple of weeks, given some of the conversations that have happened within the COIC board. And Mike, if you wanna kind of fill us in on some of those as well.
I mean, I think the CO, you know, there was two parts. Wanting to make sure that the nature of the relationship was clear between the CHRO and COIC. And that, you know, COI, or the CHRO is still essentially the responsible entity for the outcomes under the legislation. And it's not being shifted kind of to, to COIC and just trying to make that clear in the nature of what's described in the the agreement. And that really is more of a contract for services between Deschutes County, I guess, and COIC. You know, with direction from the CHRO, because I think in the end, it is about the, the leadership of the elected officials and any other entities that may become part of the CHRO in the new version of it. To kind of, you know, get clear on what needs to happen and try to make that work, that work happen at the leadership level. And that COIC is more of a implementation entity and providing some of the support services to get that work done. But there was concern amongst, you know, the diversity of other leaders that are on COIC that not clear, making sure that relationship is clear.
And my, my question at the, at the last meeting was about staffing. And, and Tammy talked about how a lot, because of the work that COIC is already doing, a lot of these roles. First of all, we sort of moved away from this idea of this executive director and are moving more into like a program analyst, that, you know, like the, and that a lot of these roles, because of the work COIC is, is doing, would probably be shared roles with, with COIC, if that makes sense. Not just you're employed by the coordinated office going forward.
And there's overlap between stuff that is beyond Deschutes County, that, you know, the Housing for All Coalition's been paused, the Regional Housing Council is being talked about. So kind of some of the people who work on some of those issues may be partly working on this issue as well.
And I would just say one other update is Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem Perkins brought up the, the need for an emergency kind of roundtable with our high percentage of unsheltered population. We had safety issues that we're all well aware of, large displacements that are taking place in, in a lot of the rural parts of our county to really bring public land agencies together and to look for options for managed camps. Something that we've been trying for quite some time. And with the help of the governor's office, we're putting a framework in place that outlines roles between governor's office, county, and the cities of Bend and Redmond. Our focus is on Bend and Redmond for right now. And we have been meeting as staff to identify sites, publicly owned sites that are potential candidates. The governor's preferences inside the urban growth boundary are, so that's where our focus has been. Some potential areas outside of urban, urban growth boundaries as well, but as part of a package. So we're meeting at the staff level to try to put together some options for the CHRO board, along with public land agency partners to consider. And then that'll come with a funding ask. We have some potential funding available through the MAC money, and MAC stands for multi-agency coordination cooperation, something like that. That there's some unspent funds that will be available. In addition to, our hope is, our hope is that the county, through their unallocated ARPA funds, which we're gonna talk about, are ARPA dollars here in a minute, that there is available funding through that and then potentially an ask of the governor's office in the short session as well, if there's any gaps there. So, you know, we're sort of midstream of that, so I don't, I can't say, here are the sites and here's the plan right now. We're building that plan, building what, what we see as maybe a portfolio of options. So ranging from safe parking to tiny home options to, you know, more of a supported services campground option. So not just a one size fits all, looking at a variety of solutions, kind of really trying to follow best practices in terms of size and looking at the land and what's possible with, it's really technical pretty quick of what access to utilities, to water and sewer and electricity and all those things. It's, you know, they're not just ready-made. We have to go through those, that level of detail to be able to propose something that's gonna work. Last thing we wanna do is just throw something out there and then have a reaction. We wanna kind of walk through that. And what we talked about the last board meeting was a commitment to participation and understanding community concerns and incorporating that into the process. I think we have a good example with the Central Oregon Villages project, where we did that work. It took some time and, but it was really effective. And then I think when that came before council, really had hardly any opposition to that. Once we can have those human to human conversations about what we're trying to do.
Yeah, there's a, in addition to like the feasibility and talking to, you know, service providers to see if, if it's even something they could, they could do. You know, there was, there's an agreement on a set of values coming from this group, but also something that at our, at our crow meeting last week that we, that we all agreed as well. And, and community engagement was, was front and center. But also, you know, there's some, there's some education, there's, you know, just a few, a few things that we, that we are all sort of agreeing to agree upon moving forward. And so it's nice to see that, that that is something that we all can. moving forward. And so it's nice to see that, that that is something that we all can, and you can, can agree to moving, you know, because I think otherwise we're, we're in a, we're in a much different situation. We won't be able, ever be able to find, you know, alternative sites for people to, to be, so.
Kind of the question I have is, okay, so what's different than the last two years of?
Lessons learned. I think a lot of lessons learned, Barb. I think that really is what it is.
And honestly, that, that Central Oregon Villages, I've been telling folks for a while that, oh, if we could, you know, have one in our own community to point, you know, to explain to folks that this is more like what we're talking about. And, yeah, I do think that is ground changing, you know, honestly.
And the collaborative effort, everyone coming to the table and working together is really huge.
So, okay.
I mean, I think that, you know, what's, CHRO is supposed to be a five-year effort, right? It's the, the, the million bucks, but that was, as I understand it, that was a commitment to kind of work together for multiple years. And these things do take time. I was having a conversation with someone over the weekend and, you know, I think it's really good to hear that we're getting to a point where we're getting closer to identify some options and some locations because we really, that's what we need for people who are unhoused to better meet their needs. It's also what the community is expecting of us is to really kind of work our way through this. And you, you know, when you try to talk to people, they don't get the complexity and the, and the challenges and the logistics. And they're just not thinking about access to water. So, I mean, they just, you know. Right. I mean, all that stuff. And so, but I do think it's, people want to see more movement. And I think that the folks who are unhoused in particular need a better range of options from us in the community, so.
Well, thank you. That was just good, good to how to use the time and space to, to get everybody up to speed. So I'm going to transition this last item to Kimala. Kimala is in our finance department. And this group was pretty instrumental to helping us put a plan together in distribute, in distributing, distributing the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, roughly fourteen million. That was, it has been. Most of it has been, in fact, all of it, I think, has been expanded at this point. So unlike the county where they're still holding back some, we were pretty aggressive at getting those funds out to community organizations through a plan. And so Kimla is here to give us an update as to where those funds have been spent.
Well, hi all. Thank you for having me. My name is Kimla Lutz. I am the Accounting and Financial Reporting Manager here at the City of Bend. And I do have some slides that I think Mickey's pulling up.
I think I got disconnected. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, so to give a little bit of background, the American Rescue Plan Act, I will refer to as ARPA funds throughout my presentation. So this was funding around three hundred and fifty billion dollars that was allocated by the Federal Treasury Department to state, local and tribal entities in order to aid in their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Slides here. With that, I can roll into kind of what I was going to talk about. The city was allocated a little over fourteen million dollars of ARPA funds. We have received all of those dollars to date. You can just jump to the next, the second slide. Seven million of that we received in May of 2021 and additional seven million we received in June of 2022. Some key dates I want to point out here, with the ARPA funding, the Treasury Department has mandated that all of the funds be obligated by December of 2024. And all of those funds must be spent down by December 2026. So we can have contracts in place by the end of December 2024, as long as we're going to spend those by the end of 2026. Next slide. So with this, I have this lovely little chart here of the breakdown of how the funds were originally allocated by stewardship previously. Total allocation amounts, the amounts that we have expended as of six thirty twenty twenty-three, which aligns with how we report to the Treasury. And then our current obligated and committed funds, and then funds that we have available to be reallocated. So in the left-hand column here, we have the allocations, the different buckets of funding that were previously approved by stewardship. And that have been incorporated to the twenty-three, twenty-five budget that was approved this spring. On line number four, I do have an ask here today for the originally allocated to Project Turnkey Shelter Operations. The staff is recommending that we remove that specificity to Project Turnkey and broaden that use to shelter operations. This is really to allow us to maximize the funding as more grant opportunities come in, allows us for flexibility and we can really use those funds where they're most needed. With that, moving on to the, oh, sorry, Mickey, can you go back one more? So to date, as of six thirty, we've spent a four point six million dollars of the fourteen million, which is roughly thirty-four percent. We currently have nine point three that is obligated or committed. So we either have contracts in place or that it's committed based on these funding buckets that we have here. And then in the far right column, we do have some funding left over from the workforce and childcare and community assistance grants that we will be asking later in the year to review and see if we can reallocate those funds or reuse those funds where needed. So again, just to circle back, our recommendation is to allow funding that was initially allocated to Project Turnkey, also known as stepping stone, to be reallocated to the broader scope of shelter operations to be available for use for any of the shelter operations, again, to allow us to maximize that funding as any other grant funding comes in and add that flexibility. And the next steps that we have are, I will be back in early of 2024 to update you all on the spending to date through December of 2024, and then with recommendations on any of those, or funds that need to be reallocated.
When we did the motion to give that three, for the contract for, I mean, do we have to go back to, to council with a new motion or anything since we're, or is it?
I don't believe so.
It's not that. I don't think it's that substantive. I think it's just, we want to make sure that you're okay with that. I think just the landscape has changed when we put the plan together and we, of course, now have three shelters that, and the dynamics of how those are funded are really unique. You know, we've gotten some, some funding from OHCS, the Oregon Housing Community Services. We have got some funding from the county. And we want to just, again, optimize. And so flexibility is pretty key because ARPA, you know, doesn't have as many restrictions as some of those other funds. So this is better to fill in as gaps than being super prescriptive.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Awesome. Does anyone have any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you.
It was, it was really fun being, I was just telling Barb, it was fun being on stewardship when we had all.
We had money, I know.
We got nothing.
Part of, part of why we want to continue to just provide you updates, even though, yes, the money has, the plan has been created, but we haven't spent all of the funds is to keep, to show that we are accountable, we're transparent. We made this pitch along with all the other cities in the country at the National League of Cities Conference. I went with the mayor this last DC and our message to the White House and to Congress was, you give cities money, we know what to do and we put it to work and we're accountable. And, you know, versus what we have been, under the system of like block grants and apply here and apply here, and it's a lot of red tape. And I think this shows that we know where the needs are in our communities, our local communities. And so we're trying to prove that up by sharing this information, not just publicly here, at our local level, but also share it within our coalitions like the Oregon or, you know, National League of Cities and the Oregon League of Cities. And so please help us beat that drum. Because we would love to have more opportunities to give to Counselor Campbell so that you can be part of that.
Can you share that cable that you can load that?
Yes. All right. And that is it for our meeting today.
Okay.
Thank you.